Go ahead and start, Basam, welcome. Just try not to move my shirt in front of you. You want to test your mic to make sure we can hear you?
You need to call the meeting to order and have the clerk take roll?
Oh, I suppose that would be a good idea.
I tested my mic. If you can't hear me, if you want, I could switch to a different, like I could go on my phone. You give me the meeting ID.
We can see you and we can barely hear you.
Laura, too, is actually, I'm having...
Yeah, Laura's really low, too.
If you want me to go to a different, to my phone, I could, if you give me the meeting ID, Laura, I could go to my phone right now and switch.
Can you all hear him well enough? I can.
I got him okay.
Yeah.
He's a lot better now than in the beginning.
Right.
Maybe because you moved closer to the mic.
I'll write the computer, here you go.
Could very well be. All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order and indicate for the record that all council members are present. The first item on our agenda is the council interviews of planning commission applicants. We have four applicants and we're going to get busy and I'm going to exercise the mayor's prerogative to say we have 10 minutes apiece. We go over to 12 or something, we'll be fine, but I'm aiming to get done by seven. So, Basam, well, you are our first candidate and I will ask the first question, which is, tell us just a little bit about yourself and why you want to remain on the planning commission?
I'll try to be fast so you guys could ask all your questions. I'm a father, three daughters, been in Clayton for around 12 years, in America for 24 years. I have a master's degree in architecture and I specialize in accessibility for the last 10 years. I consult with the state, I consult with city of San Francisco, with the governor and on accessibility and the planning commission, I see it as, I want to stay on it for a continuation of what we started. And I think it's important, experience-wise, to be not emotionally involved, but technical experience that will head the planning commission. The decisions eventually are all yours, not the planning commission.
Okay, very good, thank you. CW, do you want to ask your first question?
I can't hear him.
You're muted, CW.
Here, hold on, here we go. Okay, all right, hello, Basam, how are you doing? The planning commission at times hears items that can be controversial or are subject to differing opinions among the Clayton residents. How do you approach those matters and how do you remain unbiased and without prejudgment in order to render a decision as a planning commissioner?
Exactly what happened just recently with, I'll call it, the Olivia project. We avoided, or I avoided anything to it until it reached the planning commission. I voted for the Olivia project, but I personally don't like the Olivia project, I'm against it. But I have to apply the rules and regulations and the municipal code and whatever is ahead of me. So if I'm gonna vote no on a project, I have to have valid reasons documented with studies how to vote and vote no on it. So I voted for a project that I personally don't like, but because I couldn't find any valid reasons, any studies, that allows me to vote no on it. And that's how I approach it. It's 100% no emotion, it's just physical, technical. Technically, the planning commission is has, is a technical position, it's not a political position.
Thank you.
Okay, Tuya, you want to ask your first one?
Yeah, so later this year, the regional housing needs allocation will be provided to the Bay Area, which eventually will result in the updated allocations for each city. The allocations are anticipated to be double the figures from the prior cycle, perhaps even more. By law, each city is required to update their housing elements to accommodate for the RINA figure. As a planning commissioner, will you vote to identify additional opportunity sites and upzone those parcels needed to accommodate for the housing in order to satisfy Clayton's RINA figure for the next cycle? And will you do so even if some members of the public do not want any additional housing in Clayton?
Absolutely, if the law requires me to do so, I will do so. I will follow exactly the letter of the law.
Okay, so Jeff, your first one.
Sure. Do you think that actions taken outside the scope of the role of planning commissioner could reflect on the actions taken within the scope of a planning commissioner? In other words, do you think as a representative of the city, should an appointed planning commissioner cede some of their ability to speak out on controversial matters in the interest of maintaining neutrality or objectivity?
No, I don't think so. I think everybody as a citizen has the right for the First Amendment speech and the planning commission is not a political position. And people could say their opinions, although if, I know where your question coming from, although if you, for example, changed the statements made by me, misrepresented my statements, and you turned it into a political position, it wasn't a political position until you mentioned the planning commission opinion. So no, I think everybody as a citizen have the right for First Amendment, for first freedom of speech and that should not affect the technical part of the planning commission. Because when the planning commission is not political, please do not politicize the planning commission.
Okay, CW, you want to go back to your first, second question? Unmute.
Sorry, I wasn't expecting, I thought you'd go to Jim, but let me grab my questions quick.
Just keep Jim.
Pardon me?
Jim, do you have a generic question? Because if it's on the old list, that's fine, otherwise it has to be cleared first.
All I have are the questions submitted by the council members, that's all I have.
Okay. All right, CW, your second one.
So what do you think is the most important development issue facing Clayton today and in the future? I know things are changing now, you know, since the last time we did these. So I think this is a very pertinent question, given everything that's happened over the last, you know, several months anyway.
I think the high density, the new rules from Sacramento are gonna be extremely important and controversial in Clayton. Balancing that with smart growth is gonna be a problem. And actually managing to satisfy the demands of Sacramento might be also a problem since Clayton is almost fully developed.
Thank you.
Okay, Tuya?
So as a planning commissioner, how do you handle voting on projects and legislation when based on all the information you have in the record in front of you, the choice is between complying with laws versus doing what some members of the public want you to do?
100%, I will comply with the laws. The last thing I want is the city of Clayton to be sued and lose all our money based on emotional decisions. So if the law, if I cannot find a reason, a legal reason, to justify me voting no on a project that I don't actually like, I cannot just vote no on a project just because I don't actually like it. So I'll have to follow the laws, follow the rules, follow the regulation, Clayton zoning, municipal codes, a general plan, those are my guidance. It's my role as a planning commissioner is very clear. It's black and white in all honesty, needs the guidance or does not need the guidance. I don't envy you your role because you guys are facing the public more than us, but that is how I will handle it. Again, the Olivia is my example. I don't like the Olivia, I voted for it, because I could not vote no on it based on every, all the information that we received. And we received eight hours of meetings on that, on that project.
Jeff?
Do you think that it's appropriate for an appointed planning commissioner to call for the resignation of the police chief? And if so, in what circumstances?
Well, Jeff, here's what, you are mistaken. You misquoted me and went public on Facebook and Nextdoor saying that I called for the commission, for the chief to resign. I did not. If you go back to my statement, and I have all the documents, I said if, conditional, if the chief of police ordered the gassing of kids and the next to, I was in the protest, next to me there was a kid of one year old. If she called for the gassing and rubber bullets, and I have one of them, and paintball bullets, we have evidence of people being hit with it. If she called for it, then in my opinion, she should resign, because those are the citizens of Clayton. You, on the other hand, misquoted me and mentioned a planning commissioner asked for the, for the chief to be resigned. You were wrong, but I'm not expecting an apology. That's fine, I know where it's coming from.
But just a note, we now have two other commissioner candidates listening into the interview. Should we ask them to dial back in later?
That would be nice if they would be so good as to wait.
I can wait, my apologies, I couldn't tell how this was working and since my connection, I noticed it wasn't working well. But yeah.
I think I have your cell phone, Frank, I will, I don't know how to treat the other candidates.
Okay, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The audio sounds awful on my end.
Somebody's got their phone...
You're on two audio sources.
And a computer on at the same time. Can we have volume on one or the other?
Let me log off, I'll come back. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we are down, uh-oh, we've got multiple sources. Volume, Laura, do you have?
I think we're on the space station.
Is that better?
Much better.
That's better, okay. All right.
Okay, so...
All right.
I'm closing over there, I need to have Jim undo and relog in.
CW? CW, do you have the phone? Somebody does. Jim did. Okay.
Jim, you might be trying to do it off of just...
Jim is on his iPhone now because my iPad is not working.
It's not locked out.
Okay. Jim, you can only have your computer or your phone on for volume, you cannot have both. One has to be muted. Okay, CW, your third question.
Okay, to what extent and how should the city of Clayton regulate development? And how would you balance private property rights with civic needs?
Well, how many, how many hours do I have to answer that question?
Well...
Take a stab.
In all honesty, I'm firmly believer, I believe in development that is controlled, sustained. I believe that people who own their land have the right to develop their land based on the rules and zoning and regulations of the city and their freedom to develop their own land. And again, I'll go back, I am an abiding, a citizen that abides with the laws. And when I get a certain criteria, I follow that criteria. I don't go off that criteria regardless if I like it or I don't like it. I'm, I used to be a military, this is how we go in the military. You get instruction, you follow the instructions. So if a citizen wants to develop their land and their land has, meets all the criteria posted on them by the city or the state, then they are entitled to develop their land, regardless of the emotional factor of it. It goes back, sorry, to add, it goes back to the, to the, to the, to the, the general plan of Clayton. If we could control what could be, it's our fault initially or the fault of when we did the zoning. If you, if you describe a land as high density, people could do it high density. So that's where it's stage one, where you control it, not on the last stage of the, when the developers come to come to develop.
Okay, Tuya, no, no, you didn't have a third one.
No, I'm good.
Okay, Jim, do you have any follow-up questions or did you log off?
No, I'm here, I'm on my iPhone, I'm trying to get my iPad back up, but I'm here and I have no further questions at this time.
Okay. Well, that's...
I have one more question.
Okay.
So if, as you say, that matters before the planning commission are black and white, not a lot of gray, then why do you feel like we need planning commissioners at all? Should we turn over the analysis to attorneys that tell us if something complies with the law or not?
No, absolutely not.
Do you truly believe that there's no gray area in matters of whether or not something before you comes, complies or not?
Well, the planning commission is an extra step to help you out in the studies of any project. We go in detail and study everything in the project and by the time it comes to you, we always, you could rely on our findings to continue. For example, I am the first one on the Olivia project who brought up the issue of the parking. The issue of the parking could have been missed by any of you if it wasn't brought up in the planning commission. So it's a step prior to your step. It's another, what, 10 sets of eyes looking at the drawings, looking at the, at the regulations and evaluating the regulations. In addition, there are items that come in front of the planning commission that do not come in front of the city council. And that's why you did the planning commission as well.
Okay, any further questions for Basam? If not, thank you, Basam.
You're welcome.
Okay, we need...
Can I log off?
Yes, thank you. You can come back after seven, go get some dinner.
Wow.
Okay, so we need to get, who was the next on the calendar?
Alan Zee was your next candidate and he has not yet joined in.
Okay.
Did they have a specific time to call in?
Well, they don't have a, but yes, this should be right about now.
Okay, good.
And it gave him a 6:20 slot.
Can someone call or text him so he knows to log in?
Yeah, it can.
Yeah, I don't have a...
He's gonna reach out from now.
I think his phone number was on the application.
I think you're right.
He's gonna contact, he's gonna join right now.
Okay, wonderful.
Hi, everyone.
There he is, hi, Alan.
Hi, sorry, I popped in a couple of times and I tried to shut my ears and pop right out.
I appreciate you're doing that and we will get right to our questions, if I can find which place I put them. There we are, all right. So I will ask you the first question, we have about 10 minutes.
Okay.
And the first question is, why do you want to be on the planning commission?
I think, I think I see it for a few different reasons. The main reason being, I've been a Clayton resident, my family and I have been Clayton residents for about nine years now. I like to be involved, I've been somewhat involved with the, with the way my boys have been brought up and the community, but my profession, doing architecture, I impact everyone's life, my clients' lives on a daily basis through the built environment. And I feel that through this role, it would provide an opportunity to be a part of shaping the community through the built environment and to be really a part of it, you know, to offer some insight and some perspective on it, I think would be, would be great for myself and a good sort of change of perspective for the community.
All right, you asked, you made a couple of intriguing comments there, I'll follow up later. All right, CW, you want to ask your first question?
Hey, what is the third book on the left, on the left side behind you? No, no, I'm kidding. Okay, so, hello, welcome. The planning commission at times hears items that can be controversial or subject to differing opinions among Clayton residents. How do you approach these matters and how do you remain unbiased and without prejudgment in order to render a decision as a planning commissioner?
Well, for the last part, I think it's always tough to not have some immediate personal bias on something. I think it's more of a perspective of trying to rein back your personal bias. I think you're, I think it's a natural thing that everyone's going to have that. So it's more setting that aside and really looking at the facts and what they are. I think every community is going to be dealing with, and as Clayton has, controversial build-outs or controversial topics. I think to the degree possible, it would be helpful to sort of prep and engage the community to, so that they have a better understanding of really what those propositions are, so that they can have some voice. I think a lot of times people don't feel that their voices are heard and so to be able to get that out there, get public input. I don't think design is, you know, design on a project should be designed by committee either. But, but again, I think, I think the majority of people out there just really want to have their perspective and have their voices heard, because I think everyone's experiences are very important. So public outreach, more making, making these projects and the details of these projects known, I think would be very helpful and sort of, I know from myself, unless I'm actively watching what the roles, what the projects are, I'll get a random, you know, flyer in the mail that says this new project's going up down the street and that's a little off-putting. So I think just keeping the community engaged as early as possible in the process would be helpful.
So just a quick follow-up, how would you do that as a planning commissioner?
How would I do that as a planning commissioner?
How would you keep the public informed, more than what's happening now, for instance?
I think, I think through the use of digital media, social media would be, would be helpful. I don't know, you know, even getting on the website, on Clayton's website, I don't know how easily navigable it is to understand really what these, these issues are. I know a lot of it happens on things like Nextdoor and Facebook and things like that. I don't know, I think, I think town hall meetings, again, for, I don't think it needs to happen for every project, but I think for definitely some of the more controversial ones, I think before it gets to a point where the public feels that there's nothing that can really be done, sort of the writing's already on the wall and things are already etched in stone, kind of doesn't really help the case. It would also, I think, help from a design perspective for, for the people that are designing the project to understand what those concerns are early on in the process so that they can hopefully take those into consideration and work that within the actual design of the project.
Thank you.
Okay, Tuya?
Yeah, so later this year, the regional housing needs allocation will be provided to Bay Area and that eventually will result in the updated allocations for each city. The allocations are anticipated to be double, those allocations from the prior cycle, maybe even more. By law, each city is required to update their housing elements to accommodate for their RINA figure. As a planning commissioner, will you vote to identify additional opportunity sites and upzone those parcels to accommodate for the housing required to satisfy Clayton's RINA need for the next cycle? And will you do that even if some members of the public do not want any additional housing for Clayton?
I think housing is a controversial topic that everyone, everyone needs housing, low-income housing, high-density housing, I think it's part of the wave of the future. My, my, my main issue is you can, you can develop housing that sort of checks all those criteria and meets the state requirements and the mandates and all that. That can be done all day long. The problem, I think, in my opinion, is how it's done and how it's executed. There's just a lot of examples of not great developments and buildings, not necessarily within Clayton per se, but just, just because of my design background, there's ways to design things so that they, they're contextually sensitive.
Yeah, let me stop you there because I'm not even talking about specific project or the design of projects. I'm talking about in the RINA cycle, we need to update our housing element that identifies where are the sites where housing can be developed and the city will in all likelihood be required to upzone those parcels to match that. So it's nothing to do with design. So I'm asking you as a planning commissioner, would you vote to identify those sites where housing could be built, would you upzone parcels for additional density in order to comply with the housing element requirements?
Yeah, I mean, I think I would be, I would want to be part of that process. If it's a requirement by the law to have this element, absolutely, I think then that's, that's sort of the case where as a commissioner, you then have some say in helping to define where those areas have to be. Otherwise, you're just a bystander saying, okay, well, guess it's down the street from me, where you have no say. So yeah, if it's a requirement by the law, then yeah, absolutely. And I'd rather be a part of it than a bystander.
Okay, and Jeff?
Do you think that actions outside the scope of the role of planning commissioner could reflect on the actions that are taken within the scope of a planning commissioner? In other words, do you think as a representative of the city, should an appointed planning commissioner cede some of their ability to speak on controversial matters in the interest of maintaining neutrality and objectivity?
I mean, should, should they be using it as a platform for that, is the kind of what you're asking?
Yeah, you know, I mean, you, you definitely, as a representative of the city, I think you definitely get more of a bully pulpit. And so to the extent that that exists, the question really is, do you think that while everyone enjoys First Amendment right to say whatever they want, do you think that that's what should be done? Or do you think that by agreeing to accept an appointment, you cede some of your ability to speak on controversial matters?
I think, I think you do, to a point of, again, again, back to my earlier comment, I think you're always going to have some kind of bias. I think you, you sort of do have to rein that in and, and I think being a planning commissioner requires you just sort of really study the facts and figures and what are the actual rules and regulations of it. And for the most part, I mean, that's basically what you need to abide by. So I think the trick in that is really kind of finding the middle ground on what still satisfies, satisfies the requirements and still meets the idealistic goals that you might have for something, as opposed to, you know, harping on any singular point that I may have as a personal issue with a project.
Let me follow up and clarify a little. I think what Jeff was actually asking is whether you give up your right to speak about other items besides planning commission items, just because you're on the planning commission?
On other items? I don't think so at all. With, you mean while? Do you mean while you're, during a planning commission meeting or just in the general...
No, more outside, you know, in extracurricular activities.
No, I don't think so at all. I don't, I think that would be highly limiting to your first, I mean, again, everyone, everyone has a right to their opinion on things. I think, I think that's, that's part of being an American, is to be able to, to voice your concerns and voice your, your issues with a topic. But at the end of the day, as a commissioner, you still have to still follow these rules and regulations. So you can not like something and, you know, on a personal side and then sort of put your job hat on and kind of make your decisions based on the merits of the project and the requirements and regulations that are, that it's controlled by. But on, you know, on a personal note, yeah, I would, you know, everyone has opinions and I think that they should be free to express. I think that's the beauty of it, to be able to express your opinions and have an open dialogue on things. I don't think, I would hope that being a planning commissioner wouldn't stifle that ability. It seems sort of, again, counterintuitive. And I see it as an appointment by the city, but I also see it as you're still somewhat representing the citizens, not just the city.
Very good, thank you. CW?
What do you think is the most important development issue facing Clayton today and in the future?
I think, I think it's housing and related to that, it's the downtown, the downtown area. I think is the point, you know, the point being the need, the future need for additional housing. I think that that's on everyone's mind, it's on everyone's mind as far as traffic and property values and views. And I think the development, that sort of plays a hand in hand with how the downtown area gets developed. As I alluded to earlier, I think, I think that's a natural progression in where we are in our population as a state. I think that's a natural progression in where we are in our population as a state. And it's how you approach those things and how you do, where you cite them and how they're designed. I think that plays a massive role in, again, how we all experience the built environment. So I think it's, I think it's really those two issues, housing and the downtown area.
Thank you.
Okay, Tuya?
So as a planning commissioner, how would you handle voting on projects and legislation when, based on all the information and the record in front of you, the choice is between complying with laws versus doing what members of the public want you to do?
I think it would basically boil down to complying with the law. I think part of the role of a planning commissioner, and probably part of your guys' role too, is to, if there are personal biases or personal ideas on how something should be handled or public opinion on things, and if I'm of the same mind, I think you try to work within those rules and regulations and see if there's anything that would allow or disallow these projects to occur. If there is no play, then you, I think you sort of have to vote in favor of what the law states.
Thank you.
Okay. Jim, did you have a question?
I have several.
Okay. You want to ask one?
I'll ask a multifaceted question. Alan, I had some technical difficulties with my iPad, and unfortunately, I was not able to hear some of the beginning here of your presentation. And I'd like to hear a little bit more of an expansion on your background as an architect. And based upon that, with your position, do you believe you have the time and ability to meet once or twice a month and assimilate all the information that you need to do in order to be well-prepared to render a decision?
I think so. I mean, we're sitting in my grand home office here. It's, I mean, planning department, planning commissions, dealing with the planning department, dealing with the building departments, dealing with, I mean, that's, it's literally what I do all day long. So it's sort of, it would be sort of part of the workload. I mean, if there's research that needs to be done regarding a certain project, it's right up my alley. It's, again, it's what I've been doing for the last 20 odd years, you know, understanding the ins and outs of projects, understanding the rules and regulations. And I think that's partially where I come from, is understanding what those regulations are, whether they be from the planning department or from the billing department, and trying to come up with designs that fit within those parameters, that still comply, check all these boxes, but at the end of the day, is still something that is enjoyable.
But you have, you do have the time to devote to this, having a couple of meetings a month, doing the research on the information that's provided you and so forth?
I think so. I don't, you know, I know on the last Olivia one, there was a lot of the information got delivered, you know, kind of at the last minute.
But get used to that.
Yeah. It's pretty normal for me, too. So, no, I don't think it would be a stretch at all to be able to accommodate, you know, to have to do that research and the legwork before in advance to understand the projects. I think it sort of comes with that territory.
Thank you, Alan.
Yeah. Jeff, did you have a question?
Oh, oh, yeah. So when you're faced with matters before you, do you feel like the law as stated is black and white? Or do you think that it's, there are gray areas and areas that are open for interpretation, generally speaking?
I actually think that there are shades of gray within the law. I don't, within some portions of the law. And I think it's, I think it's part of the challenge is to, again, find where that fine line is and balance between the law and what sort of the public or, you know, what's right for the project. I think, I think the laws are written to try to be as black and white as possible, but that's just an impossibility. I think there's, you know, there's certain things that, you know, stop or go, where there's, you know, either one or the other. But I think beyond just that simplicity, I think, especially when it comes to like the planning codes and housing requirements and things, I think, I think there's a lot of venues and gray area that need to be explored and really sort of sussed out in order to come up with sort of the right decision on things. I think so, it's, you know, a lot of research to go through that gray area to find what's right.
Okay. CW, did you have another one?
I do, and I guess it's kind of along these same general lines we've been talking about. But to what extent and how should the city of Clayton regulate development? And how would you balance private property rights with the civic needs?
Private property rights versus civic need? That's a tough one. It does have to be a balancing act. It would really depend on what the, what the issues are or what the concessions are that are being asked of the private property owner for the greater good of the city. Again, I don't think there's a sort of a block and line answer on that one either. It's, that's a tough question, to be honest with you. It's, everyone's personal property is their personal property. They work for it, they work hard for it, they pay taxes, they, you know, they take pride in it. So it would really depend on the magnitude of what that sort of infringement on their personal property would be. If you're talking about sort of empty land, that's, you know, development, again, I think some of it would, as typically as the case, would be a financial compensation for it. But it really depends on the magnitude of what these concessions would have to be. What was the first part?
The first part is, to what extent and how would the city of Clayton, how should the city of Clayton regulate development?
I mean, that's, that's really part of the job with the city of Clayton, right, is to regulate how far. I mean, do we want Clayton to be New York City? You know, do we want Clayton to sort of stay, you know, somewhat of this, you know, sleepier-town mentality and development? I mean, to the extent possible, I think that's probably what most people want. Most people moved here, and most people love that for that very reason. But there's a balance between that and the requirements for development. It's just, again, how it's done. So, you know, I feel like I'm saying a lot of the same things again and again, but...
Clayton, if you can make it here, you can make it anywhere. What do you think?
So, you know, again, Clayton's a small town. I don't think, I don't think we're striving for some, you know, high, you know, super-high-density type of environment. So I think, I think we have to keep that in mind. And again, how do you work within those regulations to still, you know, get what we need to from a development standpoint, but still try to maintain that as much of this sort of small-town feel and community that we have? You know, we don't want to ruin what we have in the process.
Any other questions? I think we've spent our 10 minutes. All right. Thank you, Alan.
Great. Thank you, guys.
We'll see you later on in the meeting.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Very good. And next up is... I think it's Teri Denzlo, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. Teri Denzlo.
Is she on the line yet? I don't see her yet.
I think Janet's calling her now.
Okay. That works. I'm going to grab something off my printer.
Thank you.
Still helps to have a printed agenda these days.
There she is.
Hey, guys.
Hi, Teri.
You have your camera? Yeah, I'm trying to turn it on now. Let's see. There we go.
There we go.
And you can hear me, right? Or am I muted?
I can hear you just fine.
Perfect. All righty. Good to see everyone.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. We are going to kick it off with a real simple one from me. You've been on the planning commission for a couple of months now. Why do you want to stay on the planning commission?
What's wrong with you?
I haven't been on there long enough, CW, to see, no, I'm kidding. No, for kind of the same reasons that I wanted to be on it originally. It's really kind of an intersection of an area, you know, three areas of passion that I have. One around leadership, one around, you know, volunteerism, and the other around just giving back to the community and being a part of what the future of the community looks like. So, you know, it's kind of some of the same reasons why I originally wanted to apply, just having that opportunity to work with the city.
Okay. Very good. CW, you want to ask your first one?
Okay. So the planning commission at times hears items that can be controversial or subject to differing opinions among Clayton residents. And how would you approach those matters? And how would you remain unbiased and without prejudgment in order to render a decision as a planning commissioner?
So I think, I think for one, remaining unbiased is trying as much as you can to, you know, to stay out of the conversations, you know, prior to the meeting. And I know there's always a lot of talk on social media, you know, trying to not get involved in that, do my research on, you know, on the particular issue, you know, make sure that I'm researching all of the particular laws and municipal codes and ordinances that have to do with that issue. And just recognizing that, you know, that there's a balance between, you know, sometimes leadership is difficult, and you've got to put some empathy into the decisions that you make, but you also have to be, you know, go into it, not being afraid to be unpopular.
I know what you mean.
Okay. Tuya?
Yeah. So later this year, the regional housing needs allocation will be provided to the Bay Area, and that eventually will result in the updated allocations for each city. The allocations are anticipated to be double the figures from the current cycle, maybe even more. By law, each city is required to update their housing elements to accommodate for their RINA figure. As a planning commissioner, will you vote to identify additional opportunity sites and upzone those parcels to accommodate for the housing required to satisfy Clayton's RINA figure for the next cycle? And will you do so even if members of the public do not want any additional housing for Clayton?
Well, it's my understanding that if we don't have a housing element that's in conformance, then we subject ourselves to losing state funding and state grants. And I don't see a way that we would have a housing element that was in conformance without doing so if we would be doubling the amount of, you know, of areas that we need to consider. So absolutely, I would be in favor for doing that. You know, I recognize it would be an unpopular thing. I think that, you know, as much engagement as, you know, the city staff and planning commission and city council can have to help people understand the process a little bit better, I think would be helpful. I think, you know, one thing that I kind of took away from the Olivia project recently is there's some folks that really understand the RINA very well, and then there's a lot of folks that don't, and it looks very foreign and it looks very forced. So I think that would be a good opportunity for engagement and education. But I would definitely vote for that so that we ensure that we meet our goals.
Thank you. Jeff?
Do you think that actions taken outside the scope of the role of planning commissioner could reflect on actions taken within the scope of a planning commissioner? In other words, do you think as a representative of the city, should an appointed planning commissioner cede some of their ability to speak out on controversial matters in the interest of maintaining neutrality and objectivity?
I think that, I think that in, you know, in any instance, you've got to wear multiple hats. So, you know, I have to do that with my work. For example, I always have to go out as, you know, representative of, you know, not only my perspective, but, you know, recognizing, you know, recognizing my job and my role. So I think that you have to go at it with that perspective. You know, I think that speaking out on issues that, you know, actively speaking out on issues, direct issues that you may be making a decision on could be perceived as a conflict of interest. And so I think that, you know, waiting very carefully in those areas is necessary, but I don't think it completely absolves, you know, absolves either the city council or the planning commission from, you know, from being able to be engaged with the public.
Did that answer your question, Jeff?
I don't know. So I guess, you know, the question's really around like, what level of, I mean, everyone enjoys First Amendment to say whatever they want about anything. But, you know, in the past, you know, this council has valued restraint in matters from our appointees. So I'm asking what, how you feel about a, you know, anyone in your position? Do you believe that they cede some of that ability to speak out or not?
Are you talking about just planning commission decisions and business or anything, Jeff?
Anything.
I mean, I think, I think I answered that, Jeff. I think it's, you know, I think it's a balance. I don't think that because you've decided to be on the planning commission, that means that your voice is silent within the community. But I think that being respectful on, you know, who and how you challenge things, I think is important.
And that would then go to Jim. Do you have a question?
Well, I'll just reprise what I asked a former candidate. I know that you gave us a brief overview of your career history, which I believe is still with Chevron. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And is that placing demands on your time to effectively meet all of the requirements as a commissioner, for example, in attendance at meetings? And secondly, being able to absorb and research the material presented to you, whether or not it's given to you well in advance or at short notice, to make a reasonably good decision?
No, I don't see it as, it hasn't been any issues, and I don't see it as being any issues. Both my front-level manager and my manager above, as part of when I originally applied, had to work out a conflict of interest process, and were both extremely supportive. So they recognized that, you know, there are certain days I may need to leave early and, you know, and I have a 980 schedule, so that gives me, and it happens to line up on the Fridays before the planning commission, so that gives me a little bit of extra time, too.
And there's no plans at this point to relocate you again?
That's, I am pushing significantly against that. In all transparency, you may have read in the news that Chevron has announced, I think about a month after I interviewed with you guys last, that they're going through a major reorganization in which 10% to 15% of the company's positions will be eliminated. And we'll learn about that in the September to October timeframe. I intend to put forward that I'm not mobile, but hopefully that won't mean that I don't have a seat. Or if I don't have a seat, then I find something else quickly.
Thank you.
We understand. Everybody faces those kinds of things, so...
Yep. You work at a big company long enough, those happen.
Exactly. Exactly. CW?
So, Teri, what do you think is the most important development issue facing Clayton today and using your crystal ball for the future?
I mean, I think the most important development issue is really around how do we, how do we balance keeping the character and the charm that makes Clayton, you know, so attractive for folks to come live, but we also meet the, you know, the housing needs that are continuing to grow and grow and grow? And so I think trying to find that balance, you know, trying to find that balance to, you know, to retain that, but also to stay in compliance. And did you say, was there two things you were looking for? I can't remember. And did you say, was there two things you were looking for? I can't remember.
So, and today and in the future?
Oh, in the future, yeah, in the future. Well, I think the future is, is, is still going to be, um, about housing. Um, you know, I think also, you know, one of the things that, um, you know, is, is very , uh, relevant to the times today, um, with, with the recent kind of social unrest is I think there's, there's becoming in a, a little bit of a more understanding and awakening about, um, about diversity in Clayton. And I think that that may become be something in the future that folks would like to see more inclusion and diversity, um, and what that looks like, um, you know, what that looks like, it's hard to tell. But I think that I, I, I think that that would, is a reasonable expectation.
Okay, Tia?
So as a planning commissioner, how do you handle voting on projects and legislation when based on all the information in the record before you, the choice is between complying with laws or doing what members of the public want you to do?
Uh, well, I think, I mean, you always have to comply with laws, um, you know, that you, you take an oath when you become a planning commissioner to, you know, to the constitution to be able to, you know, to follow that. So I think that has to, you know, that has to come first. Um, I think, you know, the opportunities that you have to, um, you know, to s- show empathy and, um, you know, and to make considerations, um, you know, to help get you a little bit closer to where the public opinion is, as I think is always worthwhile to, uh, to explore. But I think the education piece is, is, is really, really important to, you know, to help bridge those gaps between the, the, the two areas.
Okay, Jeff?
Um, in matters that come before you, do you think that the law is more black and white? Or do you think that there are gray areas that are open for interpretation? And if there are, how do you, how do you navigate those?
Uh, I, I think it depends on, you know, it depends on the specific issue. Um, I think that, you know, when you have an issue that's got a lot of legal precedent, um, I think the, the pathway becomes, um, very black and white. I think when you have issues that are, you know, new and haven't really been addressed, um, there's a lot, uh, more area for interpretation. Um, and, you know, and that's, that's, that's where, you know, my, I would tend to, you know, tend to, to do my research and understand my opinion, also rely on the expertise, uh, that we have, uh, on the rest of the planning commission, at least as it is today, is a very diverse set of expertise and background, um, and the expertise of the city staff to, you know, to understand kind of where those boundaries are.
Um, let's go back up to CW for your last question.
Okay, to what extent and how should the city of Clayton regulate development? And how would you balance the private property rights with civic needs?
Um, I think, uh, I, I think keeping the, 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 you know, the downtown appeal, keeping the architecture, design, um, are all really important, um, you know, are all really important aspects and to regulate, um, I think, you know, as much as you can to keep the, the footprint even in neutral, um, you know, those kind of aspects I think are really important for, um, you know, for us to keep the consid- the city, uh, consistent. Um, but I think that's, that needs to also be balanced with what opportunities come forward to help us meet the development needs that, um, you know, that we need to meet from the housing element and the RINA perspective. Um, and I, and I think, uh, also the development needs for, you know, for the downtown businesses. That's one thing I, you know, I'd like to see, I'd like to see, um, I'd like to see a little more business activity downtown, um, ultimately. I know we don't get a, a lot of folks interested in that, but it would be nice to, um, to see some of those areas, uh, better filled out than they are today. And it would, I think it would help some of the businesses. I was just talking with the subway owner last weekend, and he was saying, "Well, gosh, if people are coming down here for other reasons, maybe they would come to, come to my store."
Working on that for over 20 years.
No, I know.
It's what happens when you're on the cul-de-sac. Okay, Jim, did you have any other questions?
I'm mute, Jim.
Yeah, I know, I know. The, the mute gets in the way of the camera. Yeah, no, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Terry.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate the opportunity.
You bet, you bet. And our final candidate is Frank. Um, can you get ahold of him, Janet?
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
There, we can even hear you. How about that?
Right.
All right. I'm going to ask the first question. We've got about 10 minutes, and, um, so I'm going to ask the first one, and you've been on the planning commission for a couple of years now. Why do you want to do it again?
In a nutshell, because I love Clayton very much.
Okay. All right, CW, you want to ask yours?
Okay, hi, welcome. Uh, the planning commission at times hears, uh, items that can be controversial or subject to differing public opinion. Hold on just a second. Um, among the Clayton residents. How would you approach these matters and how do you ra- remain neutral and biased and, uh, without judgment in order to render a decision as a planning commissioner?
Councilman, we just went through a situation like this. Uh, you, I, I would say one thing, obviously, once the matter begins, uh, you probably don't want to engage with the public at that point. You definitely want to read the materials that are given to you, uh, keep an open mind as you're studying all the material, know the law, uh, ask all the right questions of our staff and our attorney, and reach a conclusion accordingly.
Okay, Tia?
So, uh, later this year, the regional housing needs allocation will be provided to the Bay Area, which will eventually result in updated allocations for each city. The allocations are anticipated to be double the figures from the last cycle, maybe even more. By law, each city is required to update their housing elements to accommodate for their RINA figure. As a planning commissioner, will you vote to identify additional opportunity sites and upzone those parcels to accommodate for the housing required to satisfy Clayton's RINA figure for the next cycle? And will you do so even if members of the public do not want any additional housing in Clayton?
Councilwoman, are you asking me how I'm going to vote on a matter that may come before me? Is that what your question is?
No, I'm asking if you are going to comply with the housing element requirements.
I, I, as I understood, the question is, will I vote for it? That was what you asked me, so, you know.
No, let me read the question again. So later this year, the Bay Area will get their RINA figures, and those will result in cities getting their RINA figure. By law, cities are required to then, uh, update their housing elements in order to provide for that RINA figure. And what I wanted to know is if, as a planning commissioner, um, the city required to identify additional opportunity sites and upzone those parcels in order to satisfy the RINA figure? And as a planning commissioner, I'm asking you if you would vote to identify those sites and to upzone parcels in order to accommodate for that density in order to comply with the RINA figure and housing element requirements?
So it almost sounds like I would, that like there's no choice if the matter came before me, if that's how the question is being asked. If the law says I must vote a certain way, I'm unsure why we wouldn't have a vote, but, uh, you know, would I look at the matter neutral as possible? Absolutely. Would I comply with the law? Absolutely. The only thing I think that we should, we could do better is when we have to identify these properties, I think the city could do a much better job communicating to the public so that they attend these rezoning hearings. We do a very good job promoting Oktoberfest and, uh, art and wine and other things and all the volunteering. Uh, I don't think we do a good job at encouraging the public to be civically engaged. They, you know, things pop up for the public in their surprise. So, you know, if this matter does come before us, I would hope the city does do the best it can to communicate with citizens so that they're present and they're not caught off guard when we have to make votes that under the law, we don't have a choice.
So, so let me follow up on that. So you asked for additional notification beyond what the law requires. How would you do that? How would you propose the city do that?
Well, so, for example, in all the city council meetings I've attended and watched, there's an awful lot of promotion by the city council members themselves about art and wine, Oktoberfest events where they volunteered. I don't see a whole lot of activity or a lot of promotion of attending planning commission meetings or even city council meetings themselves, just doing what the law says. In other words, let's do the minimum to inform our citizens. That's why people think of their political leaders everywhere as just politicians. A good leader, leadership is the ability to inspire a group of people to do something. So I think informing the public, I know in the Marine Corps, keeping our troops informed was very, very important. So how would I do it? Certainly not just by posting a sign over at the, uh, city hall and at the library. I find other ways to communicate. If you have a master email list, probably blast it out to all of those peoples on your email list. Certainly put up notices elsewhere. I don't think the cost is significant. There's many ways, and I'd certainly talk about it at city council meetings. I'm not a city councilman, but that's, that's how I would approach it.
Okay, Jeff?
Do you think that, uh, actions taken outside the scope of the role of planning commissioner could reflect on the actions taken within the scope of planning commissioner? In other words, do you think that as a representative of the city, should a planning commissioner cede some of their ability to speak out on controversial matters in the interest of maintaining neutrality and objectivity?
Yeah, I'm going to speak for myself on that matter. I know that since I was appointed to the planning commission, I've, I've not engaged on social media and I've not spoken. I believe I've only asked a question once, and that was about the 5G antennas, uh, but I've not spoken. Uh, we are part of city leadership, and I think the way we behave, it, it reflects on the city. It could give perception as to your biases. Uh, certainly some of the things you say, you are part of city leadership, so if you say certain things, it's going to give the wrong impression, uh, and it might affect how neutral you're perceived. So at least for me, I, I can't, I'm not going to speak, which should be for my colleagues, but, you know, I, that's how I conduct myself.
Okay, Jim, do you have a question?
Yeah, Frank, um, I've asked the same question of the other candidates. Tell us a little bit further about, uh, your background, and I know you have a pretty strong, uh, financial background. And the time that, uh, and I know that you run your own business, uh, that you will be able to dedicate to the planning commission and its responsibilities, particularly as it entails receiving the materials, digesting it, and then making, uh, your decision based upon the information provided, whether it's timely or at the last minute.
Sure, and again, something we just went through. Uh, I do run my own business. Uh, I've been in the industry since the early 90s. Uh, you all know I was in the military. Uh, I, I have excellent time management skills. Uh, since it is my own business, I determine the hours. If something else, you know, granted, I am volunteering to do this job, uh, you know, I made a commitment, and so I will keep the commitment. Uh, want to know if I know how to keep commitments? Again, I'm going to refer to something, yeah. Six years, I gave them, I signed a contract, and I kept my commitment. So, uh, I have no problem. I do wish, because I, you know, I have gotten to know the staff very well. I think Milan is excellent. Uh, he works very hard. Uh, I wish the city would invest in the right stuff so that his job would be easier, so that he's not there until midnight to stamp out some of this stuff. Granted, it doesn't come up a lot, but, you know, I think the state, the city could spend some money, uh, on technology so that he's not there until midnight, uh, and, and training so that he knows how to create the documents and everything. I mean, Milan's a great guy. We have other, other staff there, and a lot of it's in a lot of time. Uh, certainly, you know, I'm not going anywhere. I've been in Clayton 20 years. Uh, I have no desire to leave Clayton. I love the town. Uh, I can put in the time. You've all seen me do it.
Okay. Very good. We're back to CW?
Okay, in the town that you love, what is, uh, the most important development issue facing Clayton today and, um, looking into the future?
Pro- if you ask me, you know, what specific property, or are you asking, uh, Councilman Wolf, uh, you know, about a general issue coming from Sacramento?
No, I'm just looking, just whatever you think the most important development is right now, issue now. I mean, what, what are we facing? Given the things you've seen, given the things you've seen as a planning commissioner over the last, uh, 18 months, whatever it's been, um, and there's been a lot of changes just in the last couple of months alone. So, I mean, what do you think is the most important now? And then, you know, looking down the road, statewide, whatever, uh, what, what do you think is, uh, is coming at us?
Well, obviously, what's coming from Sacramento. Now, given the business I'm in and the economic trends that I'm following and that I think are going to be more permanent, uh, I don't think that we're going to see the population growth here that everyone thinks we are with all this remote working, uh, and, and people are realizing they can live elsewhere for a lot less. Uh, the RINA numbers are, are probably going to be the biggest issue to come up. Sacramento with some of the things they want to do, but I think that that's going to be difficult over the next couple of years because of what we've just endured economically. Some of that's going to slow down. If you ask me about a specific issue in Clayton that I think is going to be very important is what happens with the downtown lot. Uh, that's a city-owned property, and I think that we would have, we're, we're going to have reaction from the public on that. Uh, private property is a different matter, and, you know, those projects will come before us, and we'll deal with them one at a time, but it would certainly be the downtown lot at this point. Uh, those are the trends that I see coming, though, economically, that I don't think, I, I don't think you're going to have all this incredible development over the next couple of years. That's, that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Okay, Tia?
Um, so as a planning commissioner, how do you handle voting on projects and legislation when based on all the information in the record before you, the choice is between complying with laws versus doing what members of the public want you to do?
That's an interesting question. Sometimes the law isn't clear. There was a time in this country when laws were written much more concisely. I spent quite a bit reading the density bonus law, and it's many, many pages. Uh, you're prob- I don't know if you're familiar with the Glass-Steagall Act, which was repealed back in the mid 90s. The regulation that regulates me is a page, the Investment Advisor Act. So complying with the law, if I have a clear definition in front of me, great, uh, but the law isn't always clear. But certainly complying with the law is important to me, so I'll do my best, and I'll ask the attorneys that are present. But yeah, you, you balancing against the needs of the public, if the law isn't clear, well, then that's why there's an attorney industry.
So, so let me ask you a follow-up. So would you jeopardize the city getting into a lawsuit to take a chance on your interpretation of the law?
That's what we have attorneys for that's supposed to help us.
So you would take the attorney's opinion over your own opinion?
Most of the time, yes, if the attorney's opinion is clear.
Okay, Jeff?
Jeff, you kind of answered the question already.
You kind of addressed it, but I'm going to ask it anyway, just because I want to. Um, so, I, well, actually, it doesn't really make sense anymore. Hmm. All right, so, yeah, I mean, do you see the law as black and white or as gray areas? And in, when there are gray areas, how do you navigate that grayness, um, if you believe there are gray areas?
You know, unfortunately, law and its, you know, in the 200-year history of this country, you know, law has gone from black and white to becoming gray and grayer, and that's why we have such a huge attorney industry. So, yeah, where there's gray, you have to look. You absolutely have to look. Uh, some law is black and white, it's written simply, but a lot of law now is written with a whole lot of gray in it. So I, I think we have a duty to look into that. There's, there's such a thing as professional skepticism. Attorneys don't always agree on the interpretation of a law, and unfortunately, that's why things end up in court. We want to avoid that when possible, but even, for example, this last project, it's still in court. It's still ending up in court. We are the most litigious nation on the planet, and people, people will hire lawyers and engage in litigation all the time.
Okay, CW, your last question.
Getting grayer and grayer as well.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, to, you mentioned the, the property rights, so I'll go that way. Uh, what- What extent and how should the city of Clayton regulate development? And how should you, how would you balance the private property rights with the civic needs?
So I look at property rights like this. If I want to build something to rent out, say apartments, that's commerce. And the Constitution gives the federal government the ability to regulate commerce. And down the line it goes that we are able to regulate commerce. Private property owners do have a right to do quite a bit. It does need to be balanced against the needs and desires of the community so something fits in, hence our ability to regulate commerce. I can't put a steel mill wherever I want at the federal level. At the local level, obviously, we want whatever's built to fit in with the local character of the town. So it's a balancing act, obviously, looking at the law, looking at the regulations, definitely listening to the public, definitely enlisting the public to appear at these meetings so that we get a feel for what they want, and so that things are legislated ahead of time, and they're not caught off guard at the last minute.
Okay, any other questions? Jim, any other questions? Any else? I don't see anybody.
Well, yeah, I have another question, but I guess I'm going to withhold it because only one other commissioner addressed the area. So I'm going to pass at this time. But, and I know in my discussions with Commissioner Gavidia that he embraces diversity. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Frank.
While we're on that topic, may I say something?
Go ahead, quickly.
I don't know if any of you know what I am.
I know, I know now.
Also hispanohente. I know a lot more about this topic than probably, you know, than, I know Commissioner Diaz might know about it, I'm sure. I'm sorry, Councilman Diaz will know about it, and I'm sure Councilman Juan. It's unfortunate what's going on right now. I don't like, I don't like virtue signaling. I'll say that. The problem needs to be dealt with. Virtue signaling is not the way to deal with it. You know, I encountered all kinds of things when I was a young man, you know. I call myself an American of Central American heritage. That's what I call myself. I embrace my culture. I think it's very unfortunate what's going on right now. But I don't like the virtue signaling. I don't like to be pandered to. I've watched politicians come on TV and chew of Spanish to try and pander votes from my community. And I think it's wrong. And I just felt like saying that because I know there's a lot going on. I know there's a lot of pressure out there. There are ways to solve these problems.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, if you would go ahead and sign off and come back in as an attendee, we would appreciate that.
All right.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
All right, so we are due to start our council meeting about 18 minutes ago, so thank you to everyone who has been patient. We only have, I think, four attendees right now of the public, five now, who are listening in, so that's good. I'm sure that will grow as the evening goes on. We are now in the regular portion of our meeting. And indicate, please, Janet, for the record, that all council members are still present. And Jim, will you please recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us? And the rest of us will follow along silently.
Thank you, Mayor Pierce. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. That does work better than everyone talking at once. The next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Is there any item on the consent calendar, which accounts for most of the pages in our packet, that anyone wishes to pull for a separate discussion? Or do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by CW and a second by Jim. I don't believe there's any public comment on this item. Did we get anything on this item, Janet?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Whoa, Janet!
I don't see any raised hands either, so I think we're good there. So all in favor, please say aye when Janet calls your name.
Councilmember Catalana?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
And Mayor Pierce?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is recognitions and presentations we have done this evening. And then we go to reports. There was no planning commission meeting nor a Trails and Land Committee meeting. City manager and staff, Laura as acting city manager, is there any report from the staff tonight?
Just a couple of things for the public to note. The library has started curbside service here at the Clayton branch so people can drop off and pick up materials. I don't have their exact hours. I believe they are posted on the library's website. For all of those public people that may not be aware, but today, the Contra Costa County Health Department did issue an update allowing hair salons and barber shops to be open effective tomorrow. Check with your local favorite beauty hair salon or barber shop to find out when they will be open, because they do have social protocols, social distancing protocols they will put into place, but that's good news. And just to clarify for the public, there was an article that's out in the East Bay Times making reference to the cities in the city of Clayton and other cities that we have cut our county library hours at our various branches. I want to make clear to the public that that was not anything that locals, that we've had a role in. That was directed by the county. They staff the facilities with their full-time paid staff people, and they've had to make budget reductions. And in doing so, they have directed reduction of hours at all branches, including the Clayton Library Branch, and it would be elimination of the Sunday hours. And we don't have any input on that. That was a one-sided decision made upon their budget constraints. And so just wanted to let the public know, we certainly do love our library hours here. They did talk to the county librarian to see if there's any way, shape, or form that we could retain some additional hours, and it was uniform across the board that they needed to do this in order to allocate their resources effectively for library services. That's all I have to report.
Very good. Thank you, Laura. So we go to council reports, and I'm going to follow my screen around. Jeff, you go first.
I don't have a report this time.
Okay, Toya.
I don't have any official committee reports either.
Okay, CW.
No report from me this time.
Jim?
Nope, nothing from me.
I had six meetings. I had a Transpec meeting where we talked about our budget and passed that. Our dues will go down just a teeny weeny bit this year. We also had the Association of Bay Area Governments General Assembly where we passed the budget for the next year. The budget is balanced. We actually are at the point where we are fully funded on all of our retirement payments for all of our retirees. We're in really, really good shape, so that is fully funded as well. And since we're not adding any more debt, that's just a pay-as-you-go. We also had an administration and legislative committee meeting, talking about what's going on in Sacramento or mostly not going on. And another administration meeting dealing with the housing bill that was passed in last year. So that is my reports. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And at this time, any member of the public may comment on any item not listed on tonight's agenda. If you would like to speak, you may raise your hand in Zoom or you may press star nine if you're on the phone. I don't see anyone on the phone. Janet, did we receive any public comments before the meeting?
Mayor Pierce, there's no comment after the read before the meeting. And actually, I see Melinda with her hand up. She actually emailed something to the city council earlier today.
Okay, so we'll call on her and let her speak for herself. All right, Melinda, would you like to, you have three minutes. Melinda? You're muted.
Can you?
There you go. Unmute again, please. There you go. Now you can talk.
Okay, all right. For reference, I have sent two videos, copies of messages from residents of our community, and a photo regarding the protest in Clayton on Tuesday, June 2nd. "I'll mess your effin' shit up, homie. Let's go, bro." All said by a counter protester that witness's claim was using the N-word prior to approaching protesters. "The police should have intervened. They didn't." "To incite violence while using hate speech, is this not in the least a hate incident that should have been dealt with by the police and should be recorded as a hate incident as such by the police?" As seen in the video, a police officer turned his back to these aggressors. When an attendee of the protest asks the police officer if he is going to do anything to stop the man from inciting hate and violence, the police officer throws his hands up as to suggest there is nothing to do. This incident should have been recorded as a hate incident by the police, but it wasn't. For the police officer to turn his back to the incident is negligent and puts the protesters and the residents at the risk of violence. As evidenced by the comments on the community platform Nextdoor and Facebook, many people are outraged by the dismissive attitude of the police regarding this particular incident and past incidents of bigotry in our community. One resident says, "I have lived in Clayton for 31 years. There were about 10 or so people standing in front of Canesas, a safe haven for anti-protesters. One of these guys was yelling at us, trying to instigate something." I asked the police chief Warren and Mayor Pierce to address these questions and concerns of the residents of Clayton. One, why didn't the police make any attempt to keep the peace and take action against the aggressive individuals in this video? Two, the aggressors were standing in the street like the protesters, except they weren't asked by the police to disperse, nor were they tear-gassed. Why didn't the aggressors face the same forceful tactics the police use against the peaceful protesters? Three, does the, do the anti-protesters that claim they were there to protect business have special protections by the police? Four, why are you not making any public statements like other mayors and police chiefs around the country that you as our community leaders and we as a community do not tolerate racism? There is a history of racism in Clayton. To do nothing, to say nothing, sends a message of complacency. We deserve as a community to hear from you so that we know this is a top-level concern, know what the city's strategy is to address this, so that all residents feel safe in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Are there any other public comments at this time? I see no other hands raised. Were there any other comments submitted before tonight, Janet?
Mayor Pierce, there is no other comments submitted by email to me prior to this meeting or at this time.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, Melinda, for your comment. Some of the things have been posted on the city's website, some statements about some things, and I'm not going to speak to you. So we will go ahead and go on with the rest of this evening's meeting, but please note that we have heard you loud and clear. So the next item on our agenda are action. We have no public hearing, so the next items are action items. And item 10A is a council discussion determination of citizen appointments to three of the openings on the Clayton Planning Commission for two two-year terms of office from July 1st through, 2020 through June 30th of 2022. As some of you may have heard, we just finished our our interviews with the four candidates for three positions, and I will open it up to council discussion at this point. Who wants to go first? When everybody's speaking once.
Well, nobody's game, I'm game. Let me just say that two people out of the four really stood out for me. And I want to speak to each one individually. First was Alan Z. And I was very impressed with his, even though I had an initial problem hearing it because of some technical issues, but, and from what I saw in his background, his architectural competence, I think, would bring a significant amount of expertise to the, to the planning commission. He also appears to have a very strong planning background. And particularly, the question I asked him about how he and his architectural business could devote the energy to attending meetings, digesting the materials, both as they come in promptly or as they come in late sometimes, as we've known to happen. He also has, in my view, a very good perspective of things that are going on in Clayton, and I thought that he expressed them very well. And I would certainly support Alan Z to the planning, to one of the vacancies. Secondly, I'll speak to Frank Gavidia, who I think deserves a reappointment. His strong financial background brings a lot to the, to the planning commission. Many of the things that, that appear to be on the horizon and things that are going to be facing the city in the future, I think will require someone with a good, a good, strong financial background. He also gives me the sense of being well-connected within our community, which I think is really important. A diverse, an opinion, diverse connection to the community. He brings strong leadership. He mentioned his time with the Marine Corps and myself having...
Uh-oh, Jim.
He turned into text.
He ran out of his three minutes. That was it.
I, oh, I have 30 minutes?
You cut out there, no, you cut out there for a minute, Jim.
Okay, anyway, his strong financial, well-connected to the business, our, our community, a strong, diverse perspective, and the leadership he brings, not only from his business, but also from his military service. Thank you.
Okay, who's next?
You know, I think, I'll take it, you know, I think that we have a very diverse group right now. And I appreciate Alan's zeal to come back and, and apply again for this position. But I'm leaning toward the three incumbents. I think after working with Basam, I think he knows his stuff with regard to the planning commission. And certainly has stepped up in that, in the role of a planning commissioner to do the right thing as a planning commissioner. Frank has a very diverse background, and I think brings a different point of view to, to the commission. And Terry just started at this, and yet has sped right into, fell right into the role. So I'm leaning toward, right now, toward the incumbents, certainly open for discussion.
Okay. Toya, Jeff, who's next?
I'll go, I guess. So I would, I would vote for Basam, Terry, and Alan. I would note that, you know, it would be helpful to... I would note that, you know, it would be helpful to have another architect on the board. I think Basam already has master's in architecture, so I think he's one, but I think having another architect would be helpful. And in terms of Frank, you know, I understand that he has a financial background, but I don't think that having a background in personal finance is helpful to city finances, and more so, some of the decisions that he has made, had he been the majority vote, those would have been extremely detrimental to the city's finances. So I'm very concerned about that. And even, he even made a decision to devalue city property, which I think is a foolish decision in that sense. There's a specific decision on the Creekside property in extending the entitlements on that property, and he devoted not to extend them, which would have taken any development potential away from that property. And it would have also taken away the eight or nine units that are on that property that count towards our arena allocation. So I would vote for Basam, Terry, and Alan for those reasons.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, you know, I think having, you know, we talk about diversity a lot, so I think it's like a new catchphrase right now. And it's, you know, as a member of a minority group within Clayton that represents a small fraction of people, I think I have a pretty good sense of what it means to be a minority in a majority community. I do value the diversity of background and a diversity of thought. I think having conflicting or even adversarial positions is the way to go in the marketplace of ideas. And so I would, I would be very opposed to having a set of candidates that always think the same thing. You know, with Alan, I supported him the first time he came around, and I think that he would make a great candidate. I think that his background is well-suited, his demeanor and temperament, you know. Maybe he'll, after he gets, after he serves for a while, maybe that'll change, and he'll be jaded like the rest of us. But for now, I appreciate that, you know, willing to step up and willing to come back again. So I do think that specific background is really useful. In terms of Frank, you know, I think having that, you know, I don't think it's just personal finance. I think it's more business acumen as well as general finance, which is a skill that isn't widely held among the planning commissioners. And so to me, I think that's very valuable. To the, you know, I ask the same question to everyone, and, you know, I do know that previous to his appointment, Frank was, you know, he was an involved member of the community, speaking, you know, at many meetings. But I do appreciate his approach to the role and understanding that the role does represent the city and the fact that, you know, he has taken a personal choice to pull away from, you know, engaging in public discourse just because, you know, to maintain the, maintain objectivity and neutrality. So to me, that's really valuable, and I think that's, I would definitely support those two. You know, with Basam, I, you know, I think he, you know, I wouldn't doubt his skill or his knowledge or expertise in his field. I think, you know, that part is really useful. But given some of the, given some of the recent events, you know, our neighboring cities have removed planning commissioners because of extracurricular activities that they've undertaken. And given some of his recent activity, you know, I applaud his outspokenness, but I'm not sure that that is the appropriate venue to represent the city, both being highly critical of our police chief as well as being, you know, a self-declared member of Antifa, which, you know, to my recollection, you know, advocates for preemptive violence in achieving their goals. And so, and so in those cases, you know, for that reason, I don't think that he's well-suited at this time. You know, with Terry, I think, you know, the, her position in previous matters, I, again, when she came before us implying that, you know, myself and Tom Sonora Diaz, essentially, the only two minorities that are on the council, implying that we are racist because, you know, she didn't like the decision that we made, I believe that, you know, that makes her unsuitable for the role as well. So I would support two of the four.
How do we get to the third one?
Well, so far, Jim and Jeff have only named two. So right now, if I'm taking notes correctly, we have consensus by at least three, and that's what we have to count to, on Frank and Alan.
But here's the thing, if only two council members are going to vote for two, then I'm only going to vote for two members as well. It skews the thing. I think every one of us will voice the three, top three, or otherwise, we all voice top two.
Right.
So be it.
So Jeff, do you want to, and Jim, do you want to name a third one you would support?
No, I made a point in my life that I will not support, I will not vote in favor of something that I don't support.
I'm believing that I'm to really fill all three of the vacancies. I'm beginning to feel that we could appoint two, reappoint one, appoint a second, and then possibly close that for this time and then reopen the application process.
Well, at this point, if I may, just as to confirm the mayor's count, I've got two candidates that have, at this point in time, indicated support by three council members. The mayor has yet to weigh in on what first selections are.
Correct. Yeah, and this is tough, because I think all of these candidates are technically skilled for the work that needs to be done. And I really appreciate the service of the three incumbents, regardless of the length of their term, because they've all, you know, expressed a real interest in going forward. I'm torn. I'm really torn. I'd like to appoint all four of them if I could, but we can't do that, so.
You can't have an alternate?
No, we can't have an alternate. We can't have an alternate. So, well, technically, there are already three votes for Frank and Alan. And so it's a matter of supporting Terry or Basam. And while I admire everything that Basam has given us, and I appreciate it a lot, I also recognize that the respect that he has had from some of the members of the Planning Commission has diminished somewhat, and also from at least one member of our council, and I think that's regrettable. I think it's really sad if somebody can't speak their mind without being held up to ridicule. On the other hand, I would like to have some level of peaceful discussion on the Planning Commission, and with that, I would then suggest we support Terry. So if I count right, that means Frank, Alan, and Terry.
No, but, so Julie, so like I said, if only, if two other members are only voting for two, then I'm only going to vote, it's, you know, it just skews entirely. So I think if Jim and Jeff are only voting for two, I think the rest of us should only indicate our top choice, two choices as well. And in that case, I would withdraw my support for Alan, because I think Basam and Terry have done a good job so far on the Planning Commission, and I would only support Basam and Terry.
You know, I have to say that I don't, I don't believe that giving up your rights as a citizen because you're a planning commissioner. I don't, I don't think that that, if you looked at the answers of three of the four of our candidates, they basically said the same thing, that matters of the Planning Commission, sure, we got to stick to what has to be done. But with regard to being a citizen and having an opinion of things that are on the outside of the Planning Commission, I don't, I don't see that that's a problem. With regard to Basam's organizations, I haven't heard of the Antifa organization that he, I've heard of the organization that he belongs to. I don't, I haven't heard of that. But I do know that I worked with him, and he's a steadfast planning commissioner, knows the role. And if you look at his answers today, I mean, his answers were very concise and knowledgeable with the length of time that it takes to get those answers. Not that the others didn't have good answers, but Basam seems to set a higher standard with regards to the role of a planning commissioner, as a planning commissioner. As a citizen, we may disagree. I mean, if it was up to any politician or any, I mean, first of all, I don't, I don't really consider the Planning Commission a political role. It's an appointed role, almost a volunteer role, when it comes right down to it. We're the elected officials. But even so, even with elected officials giving up our right, if we were, if we were to, let's just take what was coming out of Washington every day. Hundreds of tweets that if things, if things were held to that kind of standard, what would we have? I just, I just personally believe that you don't give up your right to be a citizen just because you're an elected official or an appointed official, in quotation marks. So that's why I steadfastly believe in Basam's abilities. And I think that while he hasn't walked back some of the statements that were attributed to him, he has clarified his position. And I read his tweet, and I agree that his tweet was not calling for the resignation of the police chief. It was calling for, if, there was an if involved there. And so that's where I come down. But again, I'm open to conversation about this. I would like to see three of these people appointed today. I don't think it behooves any of us or their time to waste their time. And they've all applied for this. It's a difficult thing to step up and just take a position that is basically a volunteer position with very little power when it comes right down to it. I mean, we're the ones that make the decisions. Ultimately, these things can always be appealed to us. So, and given the diverse background that all three, and I don't mean ethnic background, I'm talking about just their backgrounds, and how short of a time they've actually had to gel together, I think that our incumbents are very strong. So that's still where I'm leaning.
Okay, you are, you are very convincing, and I will, I will say that I, I agree with you 100% on the free speech stuff. You don't give up your right to free speech just because you're going to serve on the Planning Commission. Yes, you represent the city to some extent, on city issues. But other issues, you're entitled to your opinion. And I also read that tweet, and it did say a great big if, so I don't have a problem there. With that said, I will, if we're only casting two votes piece, I will vote for Terry and Basam, and that makes it the incumbents, if I count right.
I still have, Mayor, I still have down for Frank, there is Jim Diaz, C.W. Wolf, and Jeff Wong that were supportive. Those were the three that I had noted from the council discussion. So you do have three candidates, and each of those have three supports. And if it's comfortable with the council, your call, if you want to take a separate vote for each one of the candidates, so the record reflects how the council members shows, you can do that as well, if that is something that is appealing to the council.
Hold on a sec. So if, okay, so it sounds like if you're, so to you, if you're three, you are Basam, Terry, and Alan, but if you're two, you're Basam, Terry.
Yeah, exactly. And if you're two, and if Jim are two, then I'm only two votes.
Sure, got it. And Julie, it sounds like if you're three, then you are Basam, Terry, and Frank. No, wait, sorry, I got that wrong. Terry, Alan, and Frank. But if you're two, then you are Basam and Terry?
Terry and Basam.
Okay.
Because in thinking it through, frankly, I really value Basam's expertise, and he has given us a lot.
No, I agree. I think that, you know, I respect the service. I think that he's done, you know, he's put in a lot of time, and, you know, regardless if we disagree on any matter, that doesn't really matter to me. I think, you know, he's stepped up, just like a lot of people have, and that's to be respected. So I have no problem with that. You know.
He's made some comments that some people don't agree with outside of his role as a planning commissioner. That's okay. That's his right.
No, and I agree. I don't think that anyone sees their right in any way. You know, so that's, that's up to him. He can do whatever he wants. So I'm trying to think about this.
So if I tally it up the numbers right, so if C.W. is the only one voting for the three, and the rest of us vote for two, I saw Basam, Terry, and Frank having each three votes.
Yes.
And Alan having two votes.
Right. Correct.
So if that's the decision, I'll make a motion to appoint Basam, Terry, and Frank.
I would second that, since that's what I want.
So we have a motion in a second to appoint the three incumbents. And Janet, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Pierce. Councilmember Catalano?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
I'm going to wait to vote. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Wolf?
Yes, aye.
Vice Mayor Wong?
Well, now you're, that's weird. I mean, I'll vote aye on the motion.
Okay, and Mayor Pierce?
Yes.
And Councilmember Diaz?
I will support the motion.
Okay, thank you.
That passes unanimously by the council, and that was to include, that was moving the resolution.
Yes, it was. I heard Tuja say that in her motion, and I heard C.W. second that that was moving the resolution. Thank you very much. All right, and thank you all for applying. We really appreciate your interest, and I have a feeling we'll find ways to keep you very busy. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, 10B, is to adopt two resolutions related to the regularly scheduled general municipal election to be held this year on November 3rd, 2020, to elect three city council members at large to public office for four-year terms ending December 2024. And Janet, this one's yours. And you're, we can't hear you.
You're unmuted.
Sorry. I have to go. Sorry. So thank you, Mayor Pierce, and city council members. Before you this evening is a routine item to initiate the process for the upcoming November 3rd, 2020, general election. In this election, voters will have the opportunity to vote for three seats on the Clayton City Council. To be included on the ballot, the city council will adopt a first resolution requesting Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors to permit consolidation with other elections, but Contra Costa County Register of Voters to conduct the election, and commits the city to reimburse the county for all local election services rendered. The second resolution establishes the voluntary candidate statement word count. The county has set the cost at $287.40 for a 260-word limit. If the city council wishes to establish a 500-word limit, the cost would double, and that total would be $574.80. The candidate would pay for this printing cost upon submitting their candidate statement. Election materials will be printed in three languages, English, Mandarin, and Spanish. The County Register of Voters will determine the cost of our local budget to be approximately $1.65 per registered voter. And the March 2020 Clayton has 1,363 voters. The proposed 2021 city budget will have $15,000 allocated for this election. election expense. This evening, if it's requested, the city council will adopt this new resolution including preference as a voluntary candidate statement word limit of either 200 or 500 words. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Janet. Any questions of Janet on that report? The one decision point is how many words?
Could I have a, I have a question. The, the dates of the filing for this?
Sorry. So Vice Mayor Wong, the opening day for candidates to come in and poll papers for the November 3rd, 2020 election will begin on Monday, July 13th. It'll run through Friday, August 7th, and it can be extended to Wednesday, August 12th. However, that time period is not for incumbent.
It's only extended if an incumbent does not run.
Correct.
Oh, okay. Cool. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. The question to answer is the word count. To me, 500 words is too many. It's tough getting it down to 250. But 500 is too many. If you can't say it in 250, get better at it.
It's been, it's been 250 in the past, right?
Yes, it has.
Yep.
It's been as low as 200. 200 is tough.
The cost, the cost of the 500 one, as noted in the report, I think it starts to get prohibitive. I would, I would go for the smaller number.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree with the, the 200 or 50 limit. That, we talk enough as it is. Thank you.
If we could just get it down to a tweet.
I can say that in 50 words or less.
Okay. So again, we have, I think that's a resolution. We have two resolutions for that item. Does someone want to move both of them at once? So we have one roll call vote?
Move both.
Second.
I have a motion by Diaz, a second by Catalano. I do not see any hands raised. If there's someone who wants to speak to this item, please hand. I don't see any attendees raising their hand. So any public comment on this ahead of time, Janet?
Uh, no, there was not. Mayor Pierce.
Okay. Very good. And all in favor, please answer.
Dave Lemon.
Yes. Please call the roll. Okay.
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
He's frozen.
Thank you, frozen. Okay. We'll go Councilmember Wolf.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wong?
Aye.
And Mayor Pierce?
Yes.
And Councilmember Diaz, are you unfrozen? There you are.
He's coming back in.
Okay.
Square. Thumbs up or thumbs down? You're muted. Give me a.
Yeah, no, 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 no. I'm, I'm having problems with my iPad. So I'm back on the iPhone. I, I don't know. I'm, I'm calling to vote yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That passes unanimously. I think that's what Janet was trying to say. All right. So the next item on the agenda is to consider adoption of a resolution authorizing the collection of annual sewer service fees and charges at a temporarily decreased rate. And we have Justin Isell, Director of Public Works from the City of Concord is with us. Welcome back. Welcome back. Yikes.
Crazy echo.
Jim, you've got two devices going, I think. Okay.
I have none.
Okay. All right, Justin.
Mayor and council members, thank you for having me here tonight. Again, I'm Justin Isell. I'm the Director of Public Works for the City of Concord. And we'll get into the reasons why I'm before you tonight as we get into the presentation. Next slide, please, John. Uh, next slide. Thank you. Counsel, as you know, the City of Clayton owns and operates its own wastewater collection system. Next slide. And it contracts with the City of Concord to operate and maintain and manage that wastewater collection system. Next slide. The City of Concord, on behalf of Clayton, cleans and televises the underground sewer lines. We, in some cases, work with your city to make repairs and manage the long-term capital projects. In other cases, we will manage them ourselves. We provide customer service and we also assess the annual levies on properties within the City of Clayton. Next slide. The City of Concord contracts with Central San to treat and dispose of all of the wastewater collected in both Concord and Clayton. Next slide, John. Thank you. We have a contract with Central San that provides for a proportional share of cost of operating the wastewater treatment plant. And what I mean by proportional share of cost is the amount of sewage that is sent to Central San is metered. And the sewage that leaves the wastewater collection system from Concord and Clayton is also metered. So Central San is able to assess a proportional share of wastewater that goes into the treatment plant and then bills us according to how much wastewater goes into that treatment plant. And the cost to maintain and operate that treatment plant is based on a percentage of how much wastewater goes into it. Next slide, please. So if you're, you're taking a look at the total cost of the Concord and Clayton Sewer Enterprise, the total cost of all of our capital projects, operational and maintenance costs, and to divide that by the cost to manage our two systems and the amount that we pay to Central San, we pay 70% of all costs to Central San to treat and dispose of our wastewater. Next slide. The treatment plant operated by Central San, it was built back in 1948. It has had a number of rehab since then, of course, but it's a very old facility and needs quite a bit of work. And Central San has developed a 10-year capital plan. This slide is old, is from last year, but it still rings true today. They need to spend about $550 million to upgrade that treatment plant over the next 10 years. Next slide. Last year, a number of actions were taken by both Concord and Clayton. Central San developed their CIP expenditure plan that we just looked at. Concord then took that information and developed a rate study. We developed a set of 10-year rates and looked at our cash flow projections to see what those rates would need to be to make sure that we could cover all of our costs and still have an operating reserve. The City of Clayton completed its own Proposition 218 process, which is the legal process that requires noticing to all property owners that you're taking a look at your rates and considering increasing them. There was a public hearing held before the city council to determine if there was a majority protest and five protest letters were received. And the City of Clayton then adopted a set of four-year rates. And you implemented that first year of rates last year. Next slide, please. These were the rates that you adopted last year. Again, all four of these, all four fiscal years here are currently approved and would go into effect each year if no changes were made. As I mentioned, we already implemented one year of those rates, fiscal year 1920. Set to be implemented this year is another $45 rate increase for fiscal year 2021, which would take the rate from its current amount of $637 to $682. And that's what we'll be talking about tonight. Next slide, please. Some actions that we've taken already this year. We initiated our own sanitary sewer master plan, which of course includes work that needs to be completed in the City of Clayton. We updated our CIP expenditure plan. We took the information that Central San provided us. They updated their CIP expenditure plan. And one of the things that they implemented this year, or I shouldn't say implemented, that they took into account in their expenditure plan are some low-interest loans that they were able to obtain from the state of California. That saves Concord and Clayton about $27 million. Central San provided those forecasts to us and then we updated our, our own forecast using the information from Central San. What we found after we were, provided that information from Central San was that the rates that we adopted would provide quite a bit more cash than what was necessary to meet our targets. We set some targets for a 30% reserve that would cover our, our operating expenses. And if we were to do nothing and continue implementing those rates that are already adopted, as I mentioned, cash flows would be quite a bit more than what we had targeted. The graph that, I'm sorry, next slide, please. Now, the graph that you're taking a look at, this was from 2019. And the green line represents the revenue, while the bars, the vertical bars represent the expenditures. And we intentionally knew that we were going to be bringing in more revenue than what was necessary in the early years. And we did that so that we could smooth our rates in the out years. So we knew that our expenditures would be greater than our revenues in the out years. But we wanted to smooth those rates so that it was much easier on the property owners. Next slide, please. Now, as I mentioned, we, we revised our revenue projections based on the new information from Central San and the updates that we did to our own CIP expenditure plan. And the revenues now are overshooting the expenditures by a large margin. Next slide, please. What you're taking a look at here, forgive me, there's a lot of information on this slide. What you're looking at in the table up above are the adopted rates, which are in the, the gray columns. The yellow columns represent what we projected but are not yet adopted or in place. And if we were to not make any changes to the currently adopted rates, the graph down below is what our revenue or our cash balances would look like at the end of the 10-year period. So you can see by the, the gray columns that at, at the end of the 10-year period, we have way more cash on hand than what we've targeted. Next slide, please. So what we did is we took a look at a number of different, we, we ran the model and looked at a number of different rate scenarios to see what would make the most sense based on the new information that we had. The first scenario that we ran, and we ran a number of them, so I'll just show four of them to you tonight. But the first one that we ran was, we took a look at whether or not we could just forego a rate increase this year and continue with the $45 rate increases in the out years. Now, as you can see from the, the graph shown there, that yes, we could do that. However, we would still have quite a bit more cash on hand than what we targeted. Next slide, please. The, the second scenario that we ran was, what would happen if we foregoad a rate increase for two years? And in the final year, we went ahead and implemented the $45 rate increase that is currently planned for fiscal year 2223. And you can see that clearly, we need to have some level of rate increases to make sure that we have cash on hand. Next slide, please. So we started looking at some more gradual rate increases than what we currently have in place. We looked at a 10, a 15 and a 45 instead of a 45, 45, 45. We would be fine in the early years, but the out years, we wouldn't be meeting our, our targets for cash on hand. Next slide, please. This is just another variation of a gradual rate increase. When we put this information in front of our infrastructure and franchise committee, they had asked us to take another look at one additional scenario, which is a, just a more gradual increase. This scenario was not recommended by staff or adopted by the, the Concord City Council because it did not balance the out years as closely as the final scenario, which was adopted by Concord City Council. Next slide, please. So staff had recommended that instead, instead of a $45 rate increase this year, we implement a, a $10 rate increase. Next year, instead of a $45 rate increase, we implement a $25 rate increase. And then in fiscal year 2223, we stick with a $45 rate increase. And that gave us the most balanced approach to the cash on hand and our targets. Next slide, please. This table just shows a comparison of what is currently in place and adopted by the City of Clayton and then what we proposed here. And you can see that there will be savings to property owners if City of Clayton does concur and goes with the same approach as the City of Concord in terms of rate increases. And then the final slide, next slide, please. This just shows what we showed you last year when we compared the current rate and the proposed rate to all of the other local agencies around us. If you look closely at this, this table, you don't see City of Walnut Creek or Martinez or Pleasant Hill on here, and that's because they're a customer of Central San. So you'll see CCSD about two-thirds up on that graph and that covers our close neighbors. But why I wanted to show this to you was just so that you could see where our current rate is and where we compare to the neighboring agencies last year. This does not take into account what our neighboring agencies did last year or what they're proposing to do this year. And even with a $10 increase to 647, we're still below the, way below the average of $692 per year. And so what staff is recommending to you tonight on the final slide, please, John, is that this council adopt a resolution which authorizes collection of the annual sewer, sewer service fees and charges at a temporarily decreased rate. So if this resolution is adopted, adopted by council, instead of implementing $45 rate increases for the next three years, we would implement a 10, a 25 and a 45. And that concludes the staff presentation.
All right. Any questions? Tuya?
So I recall when you were in front of us last time when we're talking about rate increases, it was prudent of us as Clayton to be consistent with what the City of Concord did because if we were not adopting the same fee increase in that case, then our, then we'd still, there'd be a liability on the city essentially to, to make for the shortfall. So my question is, you know, is it, is this the same, I understand we're talking about rate reductions, temporary rate reductions, but is there a scenario where we were to deviate from what the Concord City Council did that would result, I mean, does it just become, in other words, should In other words, should we be adopting the same thing the City of Concord did to be consistent?
I'll say yes, and the reason why I say that, council member, we're we're in contract. The City of Clayton and the City of Concord are in contract, and one of the provisions of that contract is that sewer fees and charges within the City of Clayton will be collected at the same rate as within the City of Concord. So that's that's our term language. And so there there is a requirement by contract that the rates and fees be the same. If we were to deviate that, there would be some work that we'd have to do in that contract before we begin deviating. One thing that the contract does allow is that the City of Clayton, if it wanted to, it could go out and also collect its own separate fee while Concord continues to collect the same fee and charge as within the City of Concord. In other words, if there was an administrative fee of some kind that Clayton needed in order to run its sewer enterprise, it would, it could do that separately from the the fee and charge that Concord collects on your behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So this is a relatively routine item in order to be in compliance with our contract, and the good news is we don't need to charge as much to our residents yet. So that's kind of a win-win.
Can you come back next week, too? Lower the rates again.
I strive.
Almost.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised for public comment. Did we receive any comments on this ahead of time, Janet?
Mayor Pierce, we did not receive any comments on this item.
Okay, and I don't see any hands raised by any of the three attendees. So I'm looking for a motion on this resolution.
I move the motion to lower the rates, as stated.
A second, then.
Motion by Juan, a second by Wolf. If there's no further discussion, Janet, would you please call the roll on them?
Red lip.
Hi.
Councilmember Diaz.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wolf.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Juan.
Hi.
And Mayor Pierce.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all, we're getting there. So the next item on the agenda is a discussion of next steps and a process for hiring a new city manager. And let me be really clear, we also have an item under closed session to talk about this as well. So there it's divided into two sections. This is to talk about process. The next one is to talk about any possibilities of people. So that would be in the closed session. And so what we need to consider, as you may remember our contract with our recruiter, we have basically a one-year guarantee. The prospect didn't work out that that we would get that process done again. What we have to think about now is whether we want to proceed with a full-blown recruitment or whether to look at specific potential candidates. I have two people in front of me who have contacted me directly that are interested in the we could ask our recruiter to background checks and check references and all that kind of thing. She also was going to check with other folks who have been available in budget cutbacks in other cities as well that are pretty well-qualified. And so we could do a more limited search, something closer in proximity perhaps that knows the Bay Area pretty well, something like that. And we also need to look at what we want to do for an interim city manager and how all of that works. And so Mala, maybe you can weigh in here on just exactly what you want us to discuss here versus the closed session.
The closed session is only for the interim city manager position, and in that case, you would be considering individual candidates with names.
Right.
But in this open session, it's really the process of hiring your permanent city manager.
So Jim, are you
What's your opinion?
Okay. Jim, you're muted if you wanted to talk.
No, I just asked a question, so what's her I understand that this is strictly process.
Okay, so let me make a suggestion. We did a full-blown recruitment eight, nine months ago. We kind of know what that field was like. There have been some folks come available since that time or who have started looking since that time. I've talked with our recruiter, she's aware of that. I also have talked to some former city managers who have some recommendations to make. And as I say, I got two letters of interest from folks who are either have been either interim city managers or assistant city managers in the region who are very interested. They are not all the same people as we saw before. So I think we probably have somebody for interim that we can discuss in our closed session. And it might even be that one of those might turn into a good candidate for a a full-time city manager. That might be a strategy we want to look at, sort of a test run, if you will.
So so what so what you're saying is we we could streamline the process, then, or?
A little bit and see who's out there. And if there are some folks that the recruiter knows of or we have some references for who have already indicated interest, we could bring, you know, any number of them in for interviews directly without doing a full-blown recruitment if we want to.
I'm not, I'm not sure what the delta is. Like, if the full-blown recruitment, there's no cost to us, there's virtually no effort to us, is that right?
Except it's a time issue more than anything. It would probably take us longer to get someone on board to do that.
Well, I mean, we could, you know, por cada los dos, like, why don't we do both? You know, you can start the search and also pursue other things. If the bird in hand works out well, we go that way, and then we're not losing time starting the process. If it works out well in the short term, then you just tell the candidates that the recruiter found, thanks, but no thanks, and you're done. Like, you could work both simultaneously, it doesn't take us time, it's gonna take her time. We already paid for her time.
Can we legally do that? I think once we advertise a position, I think we have to follow through the period and 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 consider that. I mean, within a government scene, I get what you where you're coming from, a private scene, but don't we, once we advertise a position, don't we have to follow through with it?
I mean, it's more bad form, right? That you would typically follow a process and carry through with that process if you want to do a full recruitment. It doesn't mean that you can't limit your interview candidates to a smaller pool, including if you have a a good interim city manager candidate.
And the interim can
I mean, would it?
Could we
I mean, wouldn't we just say that the
We just determine the timeline.
Wouldn't couldn't we just tell the recruiter to say, keep this open until filled? And then you're not running into any timing issues. Like, typically, you would see in a government position, you know, this position will be held until X date, and then we're gonna look at applicants. But we don't have to do that, we could just say it's open until filled, recruiter, go nuts. And then we also go nuts and let the ships fall where they may.
My question is, can we establish a final, final date? You know, maybe it's thirty days, maybe it's forty-five days, I don't know, that's a open question.
Do you mean for a formal recruitment, Jim?
Yeah, right.
I think we probably can, but that's probably more of an informal process if you're gonna make it pretty tight.
And if you're gonna use Pam Derby, unfortunately, she's not in this part of the conversation. I don't know, I did send an invite out to her, but I don't know if she has any that she would provide to the council as to what might be some options.
She's going to dial in for the closed session. For sure. But basically, we have everything on the table. Maybe if you'll tell us a little bit more, too, about process. But we have the full range of options available to us. And what we could do is we could go ahead and make a decision on what we want to do in closed session for an interim and then bring it back to our next meeting to talk about the the formal process, what we want to do going forward.
What would that give us? What benefit would that give us?
More time to think about it.
But but less time to recruit.
Potentially. I mean, our next meeting's in a week, right?
Yes, it would be on the twenty-third.
Or I can shoot Pam a text and say, dial in for the general session, and she can come on and talk to us right now.
Alternatively, if you wanted to go into closed session and talk about your interim city manager candidates first and then come back out into open session and have this discussion, including Pam, that is another alternative, if that helps.
Right.
I would do what Mala suggested, you know. Maybe, I think we need some information from Pam in terms of the timing, what that would look like in either scenario. So maybe we should go to closed session and talk about the specific names and then come back to open session and continue the discussion about the process.
Okay.
So before we do that, though, can we can we clarify on the options available then? Because the thing that I suggested, I don't see anything precluding us from doing that. Mala, do you see anything that says that we cannot do that?
No, you mean in terms of doing the full recruitment?
Just doing everything all at once.
No, you you can definitely do the full recruitment and hire an interim in the meantime. And if the candidate is good, include them in that interview process.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we have one other item on the agenda that was listed later, but I'd like to move it up. I'd like to move up the Jihad discussion now before we go to closed session, if we can. So that we can get that out of the way, and the folks who are interested in that can have their opportunity to to weigh in without waiting for us to get done with closed session. Anybody have an objection to that?
Do we then adjourn this meeting and then start that one? How's that work?
Recession this week until after the closed session because we have to report out from closed session anyway. And so we will recess this meeting until after the closed session and go to the Jihad meeting next.
Fine.
Okay, so I will technically pass the gavel over to Jeff to start the Jihad meeting.
Awesome. So I'll call the call to order, the Oakhurst Geological Hazard Abatement District meeting. Let the record show, council members are present. And now, at this time, we would take public comment from any item that is not on the agenda. If you are in the audience and you would like to make a public comment, you may. And I don't remember the button, it's like star something, star seven, star nine.
Attendees have raised their hands, and I don't, City Clerk, do you have any emails or speakers?
Chairman Juan, I did not receive any public comment on this item prior to this item being brought up.
All right, seeing no public comment, move on to consent calendar. This is to approve the minutes from the prior meeting of December third, twenty nineteen. Anyone have any? So
Second.
All right, there's a motion. Janet, would you take take the roll call vote?
Yes, Chairman Juan. Board Member Wolf.
Hi.
Board Member Pierce.
Yes.
Board Member Diaz, I'm sorry, Board Member Catalano.
Hi.
Vice Chair Diaz.
Hi.
And Chairman Juan.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, so that passes unanimously. There are no public hearings, and we have one item on action items, and that's the presentation and consideration of, well, to approve the proposed Jihad budget for twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Scott, you want to take this away?
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Chairman Juan and the the board members. This is a regular event that we all attend, and we, I prepare a budget and an engineer's report. There is an annual adjustment that's available to the Jihad budget. It's based on the Consumer Price Index for April to April of the previous year, so from April of twenty nineteen to April of twenty twenty, the adjustment was a positive adjustment this year of one point one percent. So we applied that to the twenty nineteen assessment and and then set the individual assessments based on that. And since what I'm bringing to you tonight is this short report asking you to accept the report, asking to approve the budget that we've prepared and to set July twenty-first, twenty twenty as the public hearing where you will be able to consider or would consider the levy for the tax assessment for year twenty twenty-one. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about this year's report or this year's budget. One thing I will, I would like to say is, in previous years, we have been banking some funding to be able to prepare and and provide for two or three projects that need to be accomplished. One of those projects is to look at earth movement adjacent to one of the homes, and I need to get to the it's at a Wani and we now have enough funds saved up to be able to to perform or to work on or towards repairing that. If this repair is not as extensive as I've been concerned that it is, and we have additional funding left, then we will put that towards one of the two sloping kilometers that needs to be repaired. And the fourth item that would be, there are two sloping kilometers, one at Key Lock and one at Pebble Beach. And then there's a fourth item, which is the Key Lock cul-de-sac, which is moving and will need to have remedial work performed on it at some point in time. The highest priority right now, though, is the Wani Lane to be able to find out and do some exploration as to what really is causing this issue and how best to repair it. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Any questions? Oops, that's not me, sorry.
I see what you did there.
Yep, sorry about that.
Any questions, any questions from the field? All right, seeing none. I I did have, it does, I mean, it does seem like we are doing critical repairs and having to push out some of the save-for-later projects that we had intended. So that that seems pretty reasonable to me. I don't, I don't have any other questions.
I would make
Do I have a motion for the resolution?
I would move it.
Second.
Janet, would you take, there's a motion and a second, Janet, would you take the roll, roll call vote?
Thank you. Board Member Catalano?
Aye.
Board Member Pierce?
Yes.
Board Member Wolf?
Aye.
Vice Chair Diaz?
Yes.
And Chair Wong?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Scott. That passes unanimously. The next item is board item. The next item is board items, you know, in my, in my nervousness, because I'm, you know, assuming the role of the chair, I forgot, I meant to call something out on the minutes, but it's okay. I, I don't think it's a big deal. In the, I think for the past two Jihad meetings, there was an item that we, that, or that I requested. And that was, if you recall, to, um, do a, like a report out of what is covered within the Jihad. I know that takes time and effort, and so I don't think that there's a rush, a rush or pressure for that, but I would like to keep that, that request, um, current. And so that hopefully, if we are able to find the time, we can put together that inventory of things that are covered, so people are aware of both what the assets are and, you know, what the role is. I think, uh, maybe two, I'd have to look at the records, but I think it was two, maybe three meetings ago, there was a bit of confusion. Scott, you had cleared that up really well. I think if we formalize that, it would go a long ways towards informing the public. So that was, that was the item that I, I had for future.
I'll just plan to bring that at the public hearing on the 21st, and, and that maybe can be a part of that presentation and, and answer questions that may come from the public at that point.
Perfect. Any, anyone else have any other items? I jumped again, sorry. All right. With that, we are adjourned, and thank you. We will go back to something. I turn it back over to you.
Right, we'll come back to the city council meeting. We do have to report out after our closed session, but at this point, are there any council items for our future meetings? If not, then we will recess, and let's give ourselves a five-minute break. And we will all dial in to Mala's meeting for our closed session.
Mala, did you send it to me? I just wanna make sure Mala sent it to me at my alternate email address. I don't recall getting it.
That's the pack bell one, Jim?
Yeah.
I did, I can resend it though.
I know, I'll, I'll look, I'm gonna look right now and make sure I have it there.
All right. We'll leave you over in the closed session in five minutes.
Five minutes.
Right.
We will keep the Zoom room open for you to report out when you're done with your closed session.
That's fine.
I see you there, Janet.
Yep.
I like your colorful background.
It's a bunch of sticky notes, and one of them says, can you hear me now? I don't know if you guys can read that. It's that one.
I can.
Oh, okay.
All right. There you go. Color scheme's not right. All right, hold on. I got something better.
Okay.
Ah, wrong, oh, hold on, hold on. This is, this is about what it feels like. Oh, wait, hold on, I gotta go on this side. All right, there. This is, this is, this is what it's like being at home. I'm starting to talk, starting to talk to everything. Great. Like, hello, Chair.
I gotta tell you, I was in an eight-hour Zoom meeting the other day, and we had two five-minute breaks. I didn't want to talk to anybody for hours. It was like, just leave me alone.
I don't feel the need to be on camera during meetings most of the time. That way I could walk around the house.
Yeah, well, I definitely put my profile picture up and got up and stretched several times and went and got lunch.
Oh, yeah.
Like that, but still.
Oh, yeah. All right, hold on. This is better.
There you go.
Okay.
Did you need to dial up?
We're still missing Jim and CW.
I know. Well, he's, Jim is a-
Jim is Jim.
Finding some, he's, uh, he's the light to fire for the select females again.
Yeah.
Are we live?
I think so.
I think so.
I'm still just playing with my background.
I've got Scott Denzil as an attendee, but I don't see CW, and I don't see Jim yet.
I see everything, like Sauron. This is what I do during meetings.
Play with your backgrounds?
Yeah, pretty much. It's a lot of meetings.
Yeah.
All right. I'm lit by the light of my computer screens, like a, like a ghoul.
And you got your fans going over your head?
I know, it's hot.
That looks like Jim's coming back on.
Where's CW?
Hello?
Hey, Jim.
Hey, Julie.
I can hear you, and you don't echo. Good job.
Yeah, well, these links are presenting problems to me tonight for some reason. Didn't we take five minutes?
Yep, we did.
Oh, okay. I'm losing my mind.
We is, you know.
Getting a call from Laura saying, where are you?
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay. So, we are back in session, and, um, I will report out from our closed session that we gave direction. And we invited Pam to come back to the open session to go back to our item 10D, to continue our discussion of the next steps and the process for hiring our next city manager. And, um, I think we can kind of summarize that. We asked for, um, well, Pam, let me have you summarize where you think we are, and then let's go from there.
Okay. So, um, the plan is, I think, for us to, um, start the recruitment as soon as possible. As I mentioned, because we already have a very recent brochure, we really don't need to change much of the language. That won't cost very much. We will have to do an amendment to our contract to extend the timeframe and to add, all that we will use will be reimbursable expenses. As you know, those are just pass-through costs. There's no markup on those. It's gonna be advertising, the changes to the brochure, you know, maybe some travel at some point, which of course we all know is just mileage. Um, so background checks, the Hogan assessments, if we do those. So, you know, we exceed $7,000, I don't anticipate that it would be anywhere close to that, most likely. But there's no professional fee. That is, has all been covered. This is covered in the guarantee, and so it's just those expenses. And so those are the only things we need to get it. And my, I don't remember, Mala, do you remember if it was on our paper or the city's paper?
The contract, you mean? Uh, I can pull it up if you give me a second, but we can bring back an amendment at a future.
Right. So, I mean, we're going to do, so we're fine getting it started. Um, and while those things are happening, we don't need to wait for that to happen. And so then we would start advertising. I can put a work plan together with a timeframe, but, you know, we don't need to do any more conversations. And we could start advertising by the end, ads could be out by the end of the week probably, or at le, the latest, the first part of next week.
Yeah, 'cause the contract ran for, what, a year? The original one? I don't remember.
I'm trying to pull it up. My iPad's not going very fast.
Looks like it froze. Okay. So does that sound good to the council? When everybody speak at once?
Sounds good to me.
Agreed.
Let's attack, attack it on all fronts.
Yeah.
Same here.
Yep. Full speed ahead. Agreed, Jim?
Here, here.
Okay. Very good. Okay. I think Pam's gonna have to come back in. She froze there for a minute. Hopefully she heard us.
Mayor, just for clarification, are you looking to need an agenda item at your next meeting for anything related to this?
Yes, we are. We are anticipating, starting early, I don't know exactly the time, we will by Friday. We're gonna start early with interviews for a interim. And Pam will get us the information we need there, but that would be a closed session, correct, Mala? Okay.
Correct. And I can provide that agenda description.
Right, right. So Pam's gonna talk to a couple of the people that we already know about, and then she's going to ask around a little bit more and see what she can find for potential interims. And we hope to do interviews before the regular meeting for that. Pam is suggesting 40 minutes apiece, so depending on how many we get, it, it will take a little bit longer. And then we talked about, as Pam was just suggesting, that we get started immediately with a recruitment and getting ads out in the field and that sort of thing for a permanent that does not preclude a interim potentially from applying.
Got it. All right, we'll work with you on the timing of the start for your closed session.
Well, that's gonna depend on how many people Pam comes up with. And, um, so we were talking about potentially 5:30. I don't know if Jeff and Tooyou can make a little earlier than that, if necessary.
Yeah, I can. I do-
I'm pulling, I'm pulling up my calendar. Hold on. I mean, go ahead, sorry, Tooyou.
Yeah, I think I have something until 3:00 that's fixed, so anytime after 3:00, I should be fine.
Okay.
Let's, let's see how many we get. I have potential to go at 5:00.
Okay.
But I would prefer not to, 'cause that means I don't eat until 11:00, like today.
I understand. I understand. But if we made it, Pam, do you think going with 30 minutes for the interim would be semi-reasonable? Because then we could do three in an hour and a half.
Right. And Mayor, we can always make sure the agenda for your regular meeting says 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as may be heard to give you the flexibility to run longer if you need to.
Right. And the closed session would be one that Mala would set up for us, I assume.
Janet, you can just send us the sandwiches. And the cookies.
That's what I miss is the cookie.
At 5:00 o'clock, my diet changes to liquid.
Okay, so what else do we need to decide on process? Are we in pretty good shape? Mala, Laura, Pam, you think we got this nailed down for, for next week and for getting out in the field?
And I did pull up Pam the contract, so it was on our city form contract, so we can bring back an amendment. The term was for, it was an exhibit that showed the process, a four-month process to, to select the candidate, so we can update that accordingly and bring that back at a future meeting.
Okay. Potentially even on Tuesday?
Yeah.
Got something that can go on consent?
It can.
Yeah, 'cause we got another budget meeting on Tuesday, so I don't want to add too much more to the action items, if we can avoid it. That would be good. Okay. All right. I think we have exhausted our agenda. Did I miss anything? I think I have exhausted-
And me.
Exactly. All right. Then if there are no further items for this evening, we stand adjourned to our meeting at a time to be determined for closed session next Tuesday, followed by the regular agenda at 7:00, which will include the budget. So, okay?
Exciting. All right, there you go.
Well, at least it's positive news, better than a lot of cities. All right. Thanks, guys. Have a good night. We are adjourned. Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
Good night.